I'm Chad Meadows with Code Right Planners. We are here today to overview Module Two for you, and with me is TC Morpheus from the Bro Law Firm. I'll allow him to introduce himself.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here this evening with Chad. Our law firm focuses on local government land use work, so that is obviously why we're here. Chad will be doing all the talking, but I am here if you have any questions that need a lawyer and not a planner to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, TC. Because Mr. Ward has nothing better to do, I thought we'd spend the next hour and a half talking about Module Two. Obviously, I'm kidding.
He's a good friend.
We will try to get through this material as quickly as possible. I know you guys have had a busy agenda, so we'll move quickly through this. Again, we're here to talk about Module Two. This is the second in the series of three modules. We're about two-thirds of the way done with the drafting. The last time we met with you was on Module One, the Administration Module. That was back in February of this year. So let me go ahead and overview this project for you. Series of project goals, there are six of them. These were identified in the code assessment, which we presented to you back in 2016. Basically, the code assessment is the blueprint or the roadmap for the project. It's been the guidance for us as we've drafted and will continue to be the guidance for us as we finalize the document in Module Three. It sets out topics, organizations, and issues for us to address. Module Two really focuses on modernizing the districts of uses and, to a somewhat lesser extent, revitalizing downtown. So that's really the focus of the material in Module Two. A lot of the objectives for the UDO project were taken from your comprehensive plan. Things like providing a balance of land uses to diversify the tax base, revitalizing downtown, revitalizing neighborhoods, increasing connectivity and transportation choices, promoting economic development, protecting environmental resources, more housing options, and increasing quality of life. Obviously, you guys are already making progress on a lot of those things, as evidenced by the text amendments that you're moving through now. The new UDO hopes to further those goals. The UDO structure, there are 10 chapters in the UDO. The four chapters in gold on your screen, Chapters Three, Four, Eight, and Nine, comprise Module Two. You know, we've really worked hard to consolidate and reorganize your development regulations. Right now, your current code has 30-plus sections. We've dropped it down to 10, and we've integrated a variety of material from the city code, things like your subdivision provisions, your flood damage prevention provisions, stormwater repair and buffer, et cetera, trying to bring all the planning and development-related provisions into one place, make it a little bit easier to use. The document has a new look and feel. We've supplemented it with a lot of summary tables, illustrations, flow charts, and the digital version has a lot of capabilities like searchable text and hyperlinks, et cetera. So we really think it's a development code for the modern age. So I'd like to talk a little bit about each of the chapters in Module Two, starting with Chapter Three, the zoning districts. There's basically 18 sections. They address the zoning map generally, a series of generalized purpose and intent statements for the types of zoning districts that are out there, a series of 13 sections devoted to each of the general or base zoning districts in the document. There's also a section on the four conditional districts, the section on the two planned development districts, and a section on the overlay districts. Let's talk about the key changes between what you have on the books today and how this draft document is structured. First and foremost, we've consolidated all of the zoning-related material. Lost one already. We've consolidated all of the zoning material into one chapter so that it's all in one place. We've tried to translate and consolidate the districts where we could, down from 24 to 19, 13 general, four conditional, and two planned development. There's a series of new density and dimensional standards by use type. You'll see an example of that in a moment. Comprehensive set of purpose and intent statements, I already mentioned, a new graphically-driven layout. So we're trying to supplement the district standards with more imagery for preferred kinds of development, how subdivisions would be preferred to look, et cetera. We've also tried to focus on "modern," quote-unquote, "modern" development configuration. This means, you know, more mixed-use development. So we're trying to blur the lines between use segregation, this is residential, this is commercial. We're trying to move away from that and towards use mixing by right, which is pretty typical with what modern development regulations are doing. We're also trying to encourage more housing choice, new things like live-work units, pocket neighborhoods, new forms of commerce, coworking, business incubator, makerspace, that kind of stuff, and increased focus on development quality, aesthetics, pedestrian orientation, and compatibility protection, right? One of the main premises is to take better advantage of the infrastructure investments that we've already made by encouraging infill. It's important for us to focus on compatibility so that the infill that comes in doesn't negatively impact the development that is already in place. Okay? A few more key changes for you. You may recall, the last time we were around, we talked a little bit about the conditional rezoning process. We've established a series of provisions that are limited in terms of their ability to be waived through the conditional zoning process. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Two new planned development districts, one for the downtown, one for areas outside the downtown. A new Parks and Conservation District, a new district framework for gateway corridor overlays, the focal corridors for the community, Maple, Huffman Mill, et cetera. And there are some efforts for planning on some of these corridors, you know, underway right now. Flood prevention provisions are now included as an overlay, and we've attempted to rewrite many of the other overlay provisions for greater clarity. This table is a summary of the general or base districts. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about this. I just want to let you know that we've organized the districts into four groups, residential, business, special, and conditional. We've adopted, nor suggesting, some new abbreviations that are a little bit more intuitive than what you have on the current books. The eight residential districts are going to four. We're keeping the residential manufactured home. The code assessment talked about that as an overlay, but we're suggesting that retain, be retained as a base district. One area that is a little bit different, that we have not yet talked about with you, is not in the code assessment and is something that we're going to have to deal with next time we come back before you, is the establishment of a medium industrial district. After working with your economic development folks, it was felt that the two flavors of industrial district that we have on the books today, light or heavy, were, they lacked a subtlety. They lacked the ability to accommodate the kinds of new industrial uses that we're seeing that are more intense than what you might find in a light industrial district, but yet don't have the kinds of heavy-impact, you know, smoke, odor, dust, noise kinds of things that you would typically find in a heavy industrial district. So there's a call to introduce a new medium industrial that's got greater development intensity than the light, but doesn't allow the big, heavy, quote-unquote, "dirty" kinds of industrial uses. So that's coming. We had those discussions after this material was drafted, so we're going to have to talk about that with you as part of Module Three. Okay? New mixed-use general district. Your current regulations handle mixed use through conditional districts. We're suggesting that we establish a base general mixed-use district that makes it a little bit easier to establish that, and then the two planned development districts. This is an example of the three-page layout that I mentioned to you. All of the zoning, base zoning districts in the ordinance will include a series of three-page layout like what you see here, some photographs of development examples, some photographs and schematics of subdivision lotting that would be preferred in the district, a set of dimensional standards organized by use type. You see that there's four. There's actually one column off the screen. Five different columns of use types on the very first page. And then finally, these axonometric three-dimensional diagrams that have, that are keyed back to the black circles that are shown in the dimensional standards. So the idea behind this is to show how buildings relate to one another, how they relate to their lot lines, and how they relate to the street for each district. The idea is to give the reader a little bit more sense about what we mean when we talk about the purpose and intent statements and the dimensional standards. I mentioned that we are suggesting some limitations on the conditional zoning districts. We're carrying forward the four conditional zoning districts that you have today, right? Residential, business, industrial, et cetera. Those are being carried forward. Mixed use is now a general district. These on the screen are some of the limitations that are suggested for consideration as we move forward with the project. And again, what I mean by limitations are, these are things that we would suggest an applicant not be allowed to modify as part of an application for a conditional rezoning, things that make sense, frankly, like the open space set aside in Greenway regulations that you guys are already working so hard on, public infrastructure. We don't want to see those kinds of standards reduced. Certainly, the design standards, the conditional use, conditional zoning process in the past has been used to deviate from the design standards, and that's been indicated as a problem. Finally, the overlay district standards. These are pretty important standards like floodway, watershed, riparian buffer, airport. You don't want to allow deviations from those. Those things are there for a reason. So we're suggesting that this is the list of things that would be limited through the conditional rezoning process. This is a new concept for you guys. You may recall, during the last meeting, we had a lot of discussion about this, and it was decided that we needed an alternative. We want to retain some of the flexibility that is given, that's been granted through the conditional rezoning process, and we've made the suggestion that be the planned development district. Okay? So the planned development district is like a conditional rezoning, but it allows maximum flexibility. Okay? There are a few limitations that we're seeking to include, things like limit, you can't waive or reduce flood hazard standards, stormwater standards, signage provisions, but most everything else is open for discussion and negotiation. The planned development requires a detailed master plan and a statement of terms and conditions that sets out the range of allowable uses, the conversion schedule, if you have one, phasing, and how public infrastructure is going to be provided. Okay? The basic element, or the basic thing to think about with the planned development district is, it's an opportunity for an applicant to engage with the community about a flexible, negotiated development with the underlying expectation that the development that results from that process is of high quality, a quality that would exceed the level of quality that would otherwise result from a strict application of the standards. So that the applicant wins through flexibility, the city wins through a higher quality of development. Okay? So that's the base expectation of the planned development process. Now, one of the things that's a little bit different from the code assessment is how we handle downtown. Downtown revitalization is vital to this project, and we spent a lot of time working with your staff, working with folks who own property in the downtown, trying to come up with an approach that was going to be helpful and not be obstructive to the kind of redevelopment that we're looking for in the downtown district. We settled on a planned development process or a planned development district to give us the maximum flexibility that we need to encourage the kind of redevelopment that we're looking for in the downtown. And that means buildings close up to the street, a revitalized streetscape, mixed use, greater focus on pedestrians. That sort of development style is what we're looking for in the downtown, the area inside the red boundary on your map. Now, to maintain maximum flexibility, what we're suggesting is that the planned development process for the downtown area be supplemented with 12 principles. Okay? 12 principles that all the development needs to explain how it will comply with and further those principles. And those include things like active ground floor uses, mixed uses, buildings close to the sidewalk, parking that's not close to the sidewalk, rear alleys, a focus on the public realm, public gathering areas and pedestrian scale, enclosing the street with building walls to create that sense of enclosure that pedestrians enjoy. So those kinds of principles are embedded within the district regulation, and it's up to the applicant to show how they further the principles inside the document. We'll supplement those with photographs as we move through the process so that it's clear what we're looking for and what we're not looking for. It is possible that the TRC could, during its review of the master plan that's associated with any development in a planned development district, hold a special meeting to focus solely on the design principles. So we've embedded that piece into the process to allow a little bit of extra scrutiny through the review process so that they can give you the input that you need when you're making a determination about an approval, a decision on a PDD request. Now, there is one topic that we need some guidance from you on, that we need for you guys to consider going forward, and this is it. On the screen is a zoning map. You see the red boundary. You see that there is a wide variety of residential zoning district classification within that red boundary. The issue for consideration is whether or not the city will consider approving a rezoning application inside that red boundary to a district other than PDD. We would suggest that only those applications trying to establish the planned development district inside the red boundary be approved. Okay? So that you are not in a position where somebody who might own O and I land or who might own B2 land cannot come in and make a request to establish a new zoning district that's not PDD and make investment based on that, all right, that might be contrary to the principles that you're trying to establish within, inside this boundary.
Didn't we talk about the boundary and sort of set it at one of our work sessions?
We absolutely did. This is the boundary that--
That's what we agreed on.
Mm-hmm. That's right. This was actually a little bit bigger than what we had originally proposed, and we decided we wanted to expand it a little bit. We feel like the PDD approach gives us the maximum flexibility while still protecting the principles. And the real question at hand right now is, over the long term, do we want to consider rezoning requests to something other than the PDD inside that red boundary? You could do that, and that would be okay, but it might delay the ultimate vision of establishing this vibrant pedestrian-oriented downtown hub for you. So that's a decision point for you to consider. I will tell you that the advisory committee, when we spoke with them about this, supported the notion of limiting rezonings or limiting rezoning approvals. We're not limiting applications. Anybody can submit any application at any time, and that's okay, but that we consider approving only those applications that seek to establish the PDD inside that round, that red boundary. Okay? One last thing I want to mention to you is that you have a lot of existing buildings in this area, and we do not want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I hate that expression, but I'll use it anyway. And so to avoid that, what we are suggesting is that if you are doing redevelopment under the PDD zoning district designation in this area, that the principles only be applied to the portions of the building that you are adding or that you are having major renovation on. So if you've got an existing building, we're not going to make you tear it down. We're not going to make you go in and do something to it that's, you know, inconsistent with that existing building. If you're going to do an addition, or if you're going to have some major exterior renovation, we would want those portions of the building to comply with the principles, but only those portions. Okay? So we've really tried to take a fair and balanced approach. We've tried to not be obstructionist and really facilitate the kind of development that we're looking for in this area. One last thing, obviously, the planned development district for downtown is very flexible. Okay? A lot of the regulations that might apply somewhere else in town don't apply here. Okay? The only caveat is that you need to meet those principles. The advisory committee's feedback on the Chapter Three zoning district piece is as follows. We had continued concern about the R15, R12, R9 consolidation. You guys may recall, when we talked about this with the code assessment, concern was mentioned by this body. And staff went back and did some extra research on these areas that are currently zoned R15 or R12, that are vacant, and the possibility that the consolidation that we're proposing would create a potential for incompatible development in those established residential neighborhoods. And after the research, we found that really this wasn't a major problem, that we weren't looking at a wide possibility or a wide potential of existing neighborhoods facing some kind of incredible densification through this consolidation that's being suggested. So we really feel like that issue has been solved. The advisory committee just mentioned that this is still a concern for them, so I will mention that to you. One suggestion that was made that we could certainly consider if you wanted us to is to consider some additional screening requirements via landscaping from existing R15, R12 parcels for new development inside the MDR district, which is a possibility that might help address any compatibility concerns that come up. Okay? There were some questions about public-provided parking in downtown. Certainly, the PDD district, the planned development downtown district, will have no parking requirements. Your B3 district has no parking requirements. And that's done as a means of facilitating development. Now, this city may decide that at some point in the future, you want to get into the business of assisting with a provision of parking. That's not part of the UDO, and we're not suggesting that it's time for you to make that decision now, but this did come up as an issue, and certainly, you know, successful downtown communities are addressing that issue, and the public, the public sector is getting involved in providing parking or providing funding or having some sort of partnership with individual developers to address parking needs. So that's something that's coming. As you guys begin to revitalize your downtown, this is a topic that you're going to need to begin to address and deal with. And I mentioned the narrowing the rezoning options within the PDD to just the PDD area. Okay? Questions?
The feedback you requested regarding the downtown PDD, is that something you were hoping to get tonight?
No, we don't need it tonight. If that's something that you guys would like to ruminate on and work with staff, we have, we have some time. You know, we're still drafting the document, and it's, you know, that's an easy shift for us to make if, for some reason, you guys decide you want to go one way or another. We can handle, we can handle that as we continue the drafting process.
Any questions regarding that request or any feedback that members want to get?
Feedback on that, I mean, could we establish a date that we need to provide our feedback so that we can put some finality to it?
January of 2019.
I think more like-- Yeah. I mean, I'd hate for it to just be open-ended and it get off of our agenda.
Yeah, I agree. I think the sooner the better, because we're going to be focusing on Module Three very shortly.
That's right.
So if we could pick November, December, that would be great. And I'm assuming--
November work session?
Any feedback on this, on this section?
Yeah, November. November work session.
Okay. Great, great.
So we'll have a discussion, it's a November work session. We'll wrap it up, get forward to Chad.
Very good, very good. If you need additional information for that, just let me know. Okay. Let's talk about Chapter Four. That's the use standards chapter. Basically consolidates all the provisions related to use. We recognize three different kinds of use, principal, accessory, and temporary. Okay? Some key changes. Like the districts, we've consolidated all the provisions into a single chapter. We've established a new use classification structure that allows us to address unlisted uses and quickly classify those. That's stemming from a court of appeals case that was approved a few years ago that we are now having to deal with in terms of, we can no longer just say because a use isn't listed, it's prohibited. Your current regulation considers any unlisted use as a permitted use inside your heavy industrial district. We don't think that's a great idea either, because that could bring things to your heavy industrial district that are, you know, very inappropriate for that district. So we would suggest moving away from that and into this use classification structure. We've supplemented the code with a list of prohibited uses, uses that are prohibited throughout the jurisdiction. One of the things that I want to highlight for you is that one of those prohibited uses throughout the jurisdiction is off-premise billboards. So we are suggesting that those be prohibited. That does not address existing billboards. Those are non-conforming. They can remain, and there's a whole series of state law about the kinds of improvements that they can do to those existing non-conforming billboards. So what's out there today stays and can be improved in accordance with state law, but we are suggesting that no new be allowed. So that's something for you to consider. That's change for y'all to ruminate on and let us know what you want to do. There's a handful of other prohibited uses, outdoor shooting ranges, there's a variety of very heavy industrial kinds of things, tanneries and sizing manufacturer and things that are, you know, probably pretty intensive and the kinds of things you probably wouldn't want to see in your community. So we've added a pretty comprehensive list of those. We've added a list of kind of new, modern use types. I highlighted some of them before. Remember the live-work and the pocket neighborhood? We've also supplemented your regulations for all of the state changes that have happened with respect to wireless telecommunications. We're now seeing 5G deployment throughout the state, and there's a variety of state law about the 5G system. These draft regulations are consistent with that. We've also got provisions for microbreweries and business incubators and coworking and event spaces, large-format retail, research and development, power generation uses, and a handful of others. So we really are trying to recognize these kinds of modern uses that are there. Comprehensive set of general standards applicable to the accessory uses and a set of temporary use provisions. So those are your key changes. This is what your new use table looks like. With one caveat, there are a variety of things included on this table in very small type. Those are your current regulations. They are provided solely for the sake of comparison. When you adopt the code, those things in small text will come out. They're simply there for the sake of comparison today. Okay? Because we found that that makes it a little bit easier. You have a similar table for accessory uses. Accessory uses are things that are incidental to a principal use, and there are some general kinds of accessory standards, incidental location, dimensional requirements, et cetera, along with some additional standards for common, quote-unquote, "common" accessory uses, things like accessory dwelling units, drive-throughs, family healthcare structures, solar energy systems, outdoor storage, that sort of thing. So you'll see some provisions in there for those. Also, a series of temporary use standards for things like food trucks, itinerant merchants, portable storage containers, temporary dwellings, et cetera. So with really a comprehensive approach to principal, accessory, and temporary use. There were some questions about how we're defining hazardous uses. Remember, I said there's a list of prohibited uses that are prohibited throughout the jurisdiction. There was a very good question about what a hazardous facility might be or what hazardous waste might be, so we talked about the definition of that, to be sure that we weren't being overly broad in terms of our prohibition of, quote, "hazardous." There was also a question about tiny homes. Tiny homes are not allowed by the state building code, so we unfortunately are not able to accommodate those right now. So when state law changes, we'll be the first to advocate for that kind of thing, but at this point, you're not in a position to allow those. Any questions on Chapter Four? Very quickly, we'll talk about the other two chapters. You have already seen this chapter, measurement and definitions. This is the rules of language construction. What does shall mean? What does may mean? How do we calculate time? That sort of thing. There's also a table of abbreviations and some rules of measurement, and then finally the definitions. We've brought all of this stuff together, tried to make it easier to follow. The rules of measurement are defined and illustrated, so how you determine setbacks is illustrated now. It sounds simple, but it's not. Imagine a pie-shaped lot, which is the, you know, what's the front yard on a pie-shaped lot? What's the rear yard? So those kinds of questions that come up on a day-to-day basis are set out in the rules of measurement. There's a glossary of abbreviations, and we've really consolidated your definition into a single location and dealt with some of the inconsistencies that exist because you've got them spread out through your city code. Subdivision has its regulations, flood has its, riparian has its, and sometimes some of the same terms have different definitions across the documents. So we've tried to consolidate those and address any inconsistencies. Okay? This is an example of what a rules of measurement section should look like. Summary tables, illustrations, definitions, et cetera. It should be something that's easy to follow, and a reader should understand exactly how the city is applying these standards. And this is what yours will look like, though your illustrations will be for Burlington in your color scheme. Nonconformities. These are things that exist today or exist at the time that the code is adopted, but that do not comply with the code provisions, whether that's a use or a setback or a lot configuration or a sign or a site. Okay? You have some nonconforming provisions in place today. Some of the key changes between what we, what you have today and what we're suggesting, clarification that the burden of proof of an existing lawful nonconformity is on the applicant, so they need to show that their nonconforming condition was lawfully established. Clarification about continued maintenance, distinction in the standards between uses, lots, and structures, the ability to upgrade certain nonconformities like mobile homes to a newer grade of mobile home or to a manufactured home or to a modular home, increase clarity about how to replace a nonconforming user structure after casualty damage. You know, if 50% or more of the structure's damaged, it needs to be brought into full compliance. If it's less than 50%, then it can be brought back to its prior state prior to the casualty. We've removed the amortization periods. The reason we've removed them is they're quite old. They're several decades old, and if you haven't gotten to those screening and signing by now, you're probably not going to get to it. So we're suggesting that that be removed. There are some new standards for removal of nonconforming signage. If you've got a use out there that has a sign that doesn't conform with the regulation and that use stops, then we're suggesting that that nonconforming signage that's out in front be removed. Okay? And the idea behind that is to slowly bring existing signage that doesn't conform into the-- And the idea behind that is to slowly bring existing signage that doesn't conform into conformity with the regulations. It will take some time, but this is a forward-looking stance that's not in your current regulations.
Would that take place between tenants of a leased facility?
Not necessarily. It's only when a use changes, if an existing use ceases or is abandoned.
Would we require, obviously, the owner of the facility to do that, or something?
Yes, we would require the landowner to take responsibility for removal of that sign.
Just to add to that, well, the landowner would have responsibility. We don't really have a say if they have something in their lease provision between a tenant. So it might ultimately fall to the tenant, but as to the city and zoning, it'd be on the owner.
One of the things you might see in the future as a means of facilitating this and speeding it up is that you might find the city participating in some way in sort of assisting a landowner in removal of a nonconforming sign. So that's not part of the UDO, and it's something that you might want to consider in your discussions going forward, but the idea is win-win. The city wins by removing the nonconforming signage. The landowner wins because they're not faced with a large expenditure. No comments from the advisory committee on either of these chapters. Do you guys have any questions about these chapters?
Any questions from council at 9:00 at night about definitions?
Let me talk quickly about Module III. That's the development standards chapter. That will be coming to you. We hope to be in front of you in early January with that material after we've worked with staff and your advisory committee on this, the kinds of things that this deals with: parking, landscaping, design standards, signage. That's what you should be looking for in the future. Here are our next steps. We are thinking that we would have the public hearings on the adoption of the full code April or May of 2019. It is our strong desire to accelerate that schedule wherever we can, and so we are working with your staff to try to find ways to speed that up so that we're not into June, that we can get this done before June. That is my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Y'all nailed it. Keep up the good work. Our next report is an update on police enforcement initiative. At this time, we recognize Police Chief Kepslin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for a few moments of your time. If we might, just figuratively, your minds, think about doing about 10 jumping jacks and wake up just for this last burst of activity. We'll round you out and get you out of here pretty quickly. I have five slides, two of which are title slides, so they're going to go quick.
And I would like to introduce Lieutenant Alan Balog as well.
Yeah, absolutely. He's with us. So we're here to talk about gambling and violent crime in Burlington and some of the connections that we have made in those things, and I apologize if this is a graphic photograph, but this is a murder scene that occurred in Burlington. And this was one of the sparks for us to recognize some of the linkages between sweepstakes and fish places and their high volume of cash flow and the propensity for them to be victims of crime. The picture on the right is the suspect in this murder case. It's a fairly, maybe iconic picture of a man with two firearms that he's used to kill one man and bludgeon others in the heinous commission of this crime. And for us, we need to stop this. And so our tactic today was to undertake some notice service, and I'm going to let Alan explain how that went. The graphic that's before you now shows violent crime in Burlington as heat maps, so the more red the image, the more violent crime occurs in those places. The, I believe, there are dot icons. Those are the locations where we have sweepstakes or fish game locations, and there's a considerable overlap of the two images, and this is dated for an 18-month period. And so when we look at this, this is symbolic of the need to eradicate some of these places based on their connection to violence. We worked with the media today and had a press release, and so there's some stories out, and I was just scanning some of those comments before coming up before you tonight. And interestingly, some of those are comments about, oh, it's just gambling, it's just this, it's not about the money. And for us, I want to be very crystal clear that this is not about those things. This is about violence in Burlington and keeping people safe. That's what our initiative is about. And so after much litigation across the state for a five-year period, we find ourselves in a place where we're able to act, we understand the law, we've worked with other law enforcement agencies to understand tactics that they have used successfully to eliminate and reduce violence in their communities, and that's what we have undertaken today. And so with that, I'll tap to Alan and let him share his knowledge about what goes on and what we did today.
Thank you, Chief. Today was Phase 1, and we refer to it as the public notification phase. We want to make sure that it's abundantly clear to the employees, the owners of the businesses, the property owners about what is taking place. And specifically, it's that the gambling statutes are going to become enforced in Burlington starting October 15th of this year. So as a part of the public notifications, we spoke directly with 13 people in person at the businesses today. We mailed 68 notifications by mail. During the collection, during the notification process, the magnitude of the issue became even more clear when we determined that there are over 1,000 internet sweepstakes machines that are operating in Burlington at this moment. There are over 75 fish game tables that are operating in Burlington at this moment. They can each accommodate approximately eight players. So there's the ability for over 1,600 people in the community to play at one time. We did not have any, we answered a number of questions to make sure that the employees, the owners, were fully informed about what the process for the police will be, and we did not have any issues.
Do you all have any questions for us?
Yeah, I'm going to share mine. Just tell me about a fish game. You do not win a goldfish at the end of it.
It is essentially a slot machine. So it's a cash-in, cash-out game that uses a video game instead of perhaps the absolute roulette wheel, but it's a gambling device that people use, and we believe very clearly illegally use, and they're doing so in Burlington. And so this is the notice to cease and desist and to allow those folks to step gradually over a month period out of what is an illegal activity and come into compliance with state law.
Stand up for a table and shoot fish.
Literally, you push a button, which is a gambling act.
So from years ago, or several years ago, when we were trying to determine what was legal and what was not.
Correct.
Where have we come from, from that day to now, in terms of the technology? Or has the court system helped us in that process?
So the technology has continued to morph, but we believe that the activities that are undertaken are clearly illegal under North Carolina statutes, and it's our position that we will be enforcing those effective October 15th.
So what does that mean to the, yeah, what does that mean to the elderly person who tends to make some of these establishments, or as much social as anything else? Is, I'm issuing my admittance again here, but...
I think that's a valid question. I think my answer would be that we have a number of social opportunities in the city of Burlington. Parks and Recreation provides an abundance of activities that are not related to a high-volume cash business that's prone to violence. We have confidential informants who have provided information that there are a number of armed robberies at these places that go unreported, systematically unreported by management because they know the kinds of operations they run, larcenies and other fraudulent activities that go unreported because of the types of activities, and it's completely inappropriate that any of these old people who would like to be involved in social engagements should not be in these places at all. We have a wonderful wealth of opportunities in Burlington for them to participate in, and I would direct them to those.
So is the goal to close all these places down?
The goal is to protect the public.
But if that takes that to close these places down...
The function, absolutely, is to eliminate the risk associated with these businesses that are performing in a criminal nature, attracting violent crime to coalesce, and we believe that that is a risk to our public and we should stop that.
Any other questions from council? Chief, Lieutenant, thank you very much for your contribution.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our formal agenda and moves us to City Council comments. Do I hear any City Council comments?
Mayor, I've got a few, and it actually pertains to the chief's presentation and Lieutenant Balog, but I wanted to reserve one of the council comments because they're uniquely mine, doesn't necessarily represent the council, although I think in portion and maybe in whole they will, but I think you guys did a wonderful job putting together the information to educate us on what the situation was. And we went through a series of meetings to be sure we were in tune and well-educated on what the laws were and what our action plan was, and it's a soft plan, and I completely concur with everything they've put together. I was shocked and amazed at some of the data that was presented when it comes to just sheer public safety. I'm not talking about anything other than public safety, and I started doing some research on my own to find out what some other communities had experienced in public safety as well, and it's equivalent. It's equivalent across all communities. And some of the data that the chief presented to us, and he spoke about it tonight, but it's worth repeating, is they're two times more likely to be the location of an armed robbery than another place. That's significant. That's a significant piece. 50% of the crimes are violence, and 2/3 of them include the use of a firearm. That's another significant piece. What does it tell you when the owner of a business does not live in your city, nor oftentimes in your state? What does that tell you? It's not a small business. That's not what this is. This is very disturbing. We all know the situation on April 8th, where we had a homicide. Graphic pictures, but they depict the types of things that our law enforcement are having to experience and deal with, and the community's becoming saturated. There's 33 or over 30. I don't know how many it is now, it's over 30. One of the articles that I pulled up that I was researching with regards to this has a map, and it's got Raleigh, Durham, Hillsborough, Meven Graham, Burlington. And I looked at all the dots of all the locations. We're by far, per capita, the highest, by far. So think about this, when it comes to criminal activity, we've got local, maybe misdemeanor criminal activity that might hang around these situations, these areas with large cash influx, and then it becomes over 30 of them. Well, now it's got a bigger group's attention. It's no longer just misdemeanor, you know, child, petty crimes, petty theft, whatever it is. Now there's a larger attention on this because there are 30-plus of these. Now you've got criminals from out of town that are coming in, and this is a serious endeavor. I applaud the chief and the department for their efforts. For one, stand behind them 100%. I think your plan's solid. I think it is very easy to implement and maybe more difficult down the road when the enforcement period starts, but that's okay. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But the community should know how serious this is and why we're doing it, and again, I applaud you guys for your work on this.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly, I want to compliment you for each night in Greensboro and working with them. We can always learn from our neighbors. I much appreciate you doing that.
Any other council comments?
I do want to mention just a couple things. As Manager Watkins mentioned at the beginning, a big thank you to staff and first responders over the past week regarding our response to Hurricane Florence and their continuing work to help out communities all across North Carolina. I think that shows the strength of our state when our cities can know that they can rely on communities for that support. I do want to mention, we've got an exciting week regarding the Western Electric Facility and the S-STAT program. There's a couple events that I want to extend the invitation to the public to participate in. Tomorrow, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. over at the Western Electric Plant, we'll be giving out guided tours for folks who have always wanted to see in that facility and help develop their vision for how it gets redeveloped. And then from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., there'll be a public input session also at the Western Electric Facility. There'll be a big tent there that folks can come by and provide feedback. And then on Friday, the project will conclude, and results will be presented at 6:00 p.m. That team will present their findings over at the ABSS Central Office Auditorium over 1712 Vaughan Road. So we encourage public participation in this. I think that's a critical part of how we find a good way to redevelop the Western Electric Site. And then I want to just give a brief greetings from our sister city, Gwuchan, South Korea. My wife and I were graciously received by the Mayor, Mayor Kim, and his staff, and they provided some wonderful information about their community. We had an opportunity to tour their traffic, their traffic center. Gwuchan has one of the most advanced traffic control centers in the world, and they're actually in the process of making some further updates to that. So we've got a great resource as we improve some, they were talking about fiber optic traffic infrastructure to all of their lights and going up to, they're going to the second or third generation of it. And so they're pioneering the way in traffic control in their community. So I shared a little about some of the work we're doing with them. They also have a CCTV program that they kicked off in their community, and they've been able to turn that into a 70% crime reduction. Some awesome resources. Mayor Kim expressed a desire to do a staff exchange program to help the cities learn from each other, and so we hope to explore it.
Nolan, what was your first job when you came to the city?
Traffic Systems Manager, working on our...
I think he just signed himself up. How's your career?
Pretty rough.
They were gracious enough to have translators available for us during all the tours, and we appreciate that. Mayor Kim hopes to visit our city this January with the Korean Exchange Students, and he and his staff look forward to continuing to support Korean Exchange Students coming to our community. It was a wonderful opportunity, and I want to reiterate my next point as mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Donations can be accepted for Hurricane Florence victims from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Fire Station 1. Folks can drop those off. Any other council comments?
Lots of bleach.
Lots of bleach. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? City Council is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.